I'd like to call this meeting to order and have each of the board chairs call their boards to order.
I'd like to call the Westford Board to order.
And I'll call the U-46 Board to order.
And I will call the PC Board to order with two members currently present. First thing, first thing I'd like to start with is, start off with some introductions since the, since there's been some turnover on our boards. And I'll start, I'm Michael Smith. I am the Board Chair for the Prudential Committee and currently the Chair for the SU. So I'll go over with Jen next.
Hi, I'm Jen Ash. I'm just my third year on the PC.
Let's just continue around the table then.
Okay. I'm Brian Downey and I'm on the U-46 School Board. I don't remember what year it is.
Too bad.
Gary Baker on the U-46 School Board, Representative of Essex Town.
Al Bombardier, U-46, and a member of Essex Town.
I'm Jack Balindorf, Chairman of U-46 from Essex Junction.
I'm Judy D'Enova Superintendent.
We need to include you too.
Mark Drop, Board Chair of Westford.
I'm Knox, U-46 Board Member from Essex Junction.
I'm Greg Royd, Vice Chair of the Westford Board.
I'm Mark Doherty, the Westford Board.
Liz Subin, U-46 Board, Essex Town.
Thank you. Next up is some visitors and staff to be heard. Jan?
My name's Jan Bedard and I work with EF High School where I'm from for 15 years of bringing students into Essex High School. And this year Essex was nominated for a Golden Education Award. And I'm here to introduce Emma who is from Denmark, who is in the throes of finishing up today with her last day, and she's saying that very, very strange. And so she's here to speak a few words and to give you support to Mr. Griffin.
Thank you.
Thank you. And first I want to thank Essex for welcoming me as an EF High School Exchange Year student. I was not only accepted, but felt like I became an integral part of the academic and extracurricular community. Thanks to your continued generosity, you have provided me and the community with a shared and unforgettable experience. The EF Global Education Excellent Award is presented, is presented annually to high schools that demonstrate an extraordinary commitment to international understanding and global awareness. Essex High School is one of the selected groups of high school recognized across the United States for the 2013-2014 school year. By welcoming more than 38 EF exchange students into its classrooms for the past 18 years, Essex has been instrumental in supporting and priority United States Foreign Policy Goal of expanding communications between US citizens and people from other countries. Thank you for students past and students still hoping to come and share the extraordinary experience of a lifetime in the Essex High School community. And this is for you.
Thank you, Emma. Thank you very much. Congratulations on finishing today, Emma.
Thank you.
I know that's a good, that's a good feeling.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank Emma and all the foreign exchange students who join us yearly to add to our community, to benefit our students and our families, to make us a better place and more understanding of the world that they're going to be working in one day very soon. And I also like to thank our families, our host families, because without their willingness to take on students, this would not be possible. But it is a huge success every year, and this means a lot to our school community. So thank you very much, Emma. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jan. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You've done a fantastic job. David, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Would you like to say thank you and tell them in Danish? I mean, you know.
No, I would actually like to add a thank you from my host family too. David Sands, Susan Sweetser, Frankie and Katie Sands, who has been there for me throughout the entire year, which can be really hard because you come as this strange person and you get this headache from speaking English all the time. And the first meal I got was pizza and it was awesome and I'm just really thankful. So, yeah, I would like to thank my host family too.
Not, if I can say, not only has she experienced pizza and hamburgers, she thinks McDonald's fries are the greatest.
Yeah.
And, and not only that, but she's going home a state champion. She, along with the Essex rugby team, just won the state championship this past year.
Congratulations.
So she's a great support and member of the team.
I'd also like to point out there's no casts or anything of that nature. It was very successful.
We like to make it a school sport.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
We're still looking for host families.
And could you guys, I'm gonna pass, excuse me, I'm gonna pass around a sign sheet for folks?
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Next up is some updates. First off, from the, from the SU meeting we last had, there was a reorganization and I took over the big chair, Jack took over the little chair, and Mark is now taking notes. Another thing we talked about was to have the Executive Committee look at scheduling a meeting with the Essex Town Board about interest in continuing the discussion about collaboration. Collaboration between the districts. Also, we're going to continue moving forward without an Associate Superintendent, even though, you know, it's in the budget for this year and for next year, but Judy's working with, with her team about distributing the workload and seeing how that, that works We also had a discussion on the overall results of the climate survey, and so hopefully everyone's had a chance to, to take a look at those. You know, a couple of things that we talked about was, you know, with, with changing the climate survey to the spring, there was some, some challenges at the high school. You know, there was also, there was places where we improved, but there was some that, that there was some disappointment in the results. But the timing for next year will still take place in the spring, but they'll use an assessment calendar and be a little more mindful of, you know, the competing interests for, for when the survey is administered. Also, some of the schools, I think particularly the elementary schools, had some success with scheduling the parent-teacher conferences at the same time as the survey was going on to encourage parent participation. So that, that helped out. We went ahead and submitted the Act 153 waiver. We expect to get a result, a response by the 13th of June. A draft annual work plan was consensually received by the Board. However, Leaders at Work is still fine tuning a couple pieces of the, of the work plan. And we also approved policies at second reading, B-20, G-8D, J-8, and J-9.
So if I could add just a bit?
Yes.
For those who, who aren't familiar with the AWP or Annual Work Plan, that's essentially a document that our Superintendent and the Board co-develop to outline what the year's goals are. Some of the goals may be carryovers from the previous year because they take longer than one calendar year to accomplish. Others may be new, but the concept there being that we have an agreement what the goals are that's used as a basis for the Superintendent evaluation. And that's also an easy way for everybody in the administrative team and on the boards to really understand what the priorities are. So it's a, it's a one-page document that gives us clear vision into what it is we're trying to accomplish for this year. So as Michael alluded to, the draft of that was accepted. We're gonna be fleshing it out with measurable milestones that will directly correlate to the Superintendent's evaluation, but you will start seeing that in your org notes packets. Familiarize yourself with it, and if you have any questions, the Executive Committee can easily answer them for you.
Thanks for, for adding that. Let's see, do you wanna talk about the legislative updates? Let's go into that one.
So the Superintendent and Board Chairs group right here, this is the Executive Committee, and they're required, we're required by law to have eight hours of training. It began last year, this is the second year. So Jack was unavailable, but both Michael and Mark and I attended an eight-hour training. And at that time, we received legislative updates, one of which we wanted to speak to tonight about open meeting laws. So maybe, Mark, you can speak a little bit to what we learned about some of the changes.
Yes. You know, we generally, we generally try to keep above the board with everything we do. And, you know, that's a great goal, but the list keeps growing. So several new laws are about to be signed in or were just signed into law that I think directly affect the way that we conduct our business. Specifically, there are a few pieces of that legislation that I think really compel us to be more rigorous with how we deal with electronic communications. One being that the public request for records now is a bit different, and if there is a request, compliance has, is pretty arduous. If we are using personal emails, personally email accounts for our CCSU work, it will become very difficult to provide those communications if there is a request for public documents. So this last few months into last year, we've been advocating that everybody who, who has been issued a CCSUVT.org email address, please use that for all official communications. At this point, it's mandated. If there is a request, that is the repository, you do nothing. If you're using a personal email, then that will be an invasion of your privacy in, in a sense, as we comb through your personal emails, pulling out the ones that are appropriate to that records request. Nobody wants to go through that, and truthfully, it's, I don't even know how we would go about doing it, especially if people choose to use their work email for communications. So the note here is to use the CCSUVT email address exclusively. So one of the concerns obviously is, if I don't check that very often, am I missing something? So in your org notes, there's a little one-page tutorial how you can set up email forwarding in your Gmail account. You can forward your emails to alert you that there's something new to any other account, and then that will allow you to log back into your CCSU account and respond appropriately there. Some other changes to open meeting law that will affect us have to do with the requirement to warn and take minutes at committee meetings. So even if a committee does not have a quorum of school board members, they are now required to warn and take minutes as if it were a scheduled meeting. So we're talking one week prior generally, and this, I think, is gonna be a bit of a change, especially if you're doing community-based committees. I know in Westford, we have one that we just established, so suddenly, you know, a group of people are going to really have to coordinate their schedules to find meeting times, public meeting places. It affects things in a way that, that you may not be aware of, so keep that in mind. Any, any committees during the work of the Board are now under the same, same laws. Executive session has been further refined. I, I do not know all of the details off the top of my head, but I think that you should expect to see an update in one of the org notes with all of the, with all of the permissible reasons to enter executive session. Beyond that, I don't recall if there were any others that really altered our day-to-day.
Yeah, I think you captured the highlights. Michael, is there anything else?
No, I was just trying to see if I had the, the reasons to enter an executive session at some point.
I thought you had that memorized.
I memorized as well as Mark does.
So to be, to be fair, the VSB was really just reacting to these legislative sessions, so they did not have a full set of guidelines or even interpretations available for each change. We expect to see that from the VSB shortly. You'll see it either on their website or in an update that's coming from them, which then will disseminate to all of our Board members.
One question? One of my previous concerns was with the Executive Committee not warning or recording minutes. Is the Executive Committee included in this change in the law?
We have always had to warn meetings.
The Executive Committee?
Yes.
Okay.
And this last year, we, I think, were utilizing the emergency warning more than, more than a few times, and that's a shorter notice than, you know, a week. I think it's 24 hours.
Yes.
And that was in the service of the Superintendent's search mostly.
Yeah.
We had a great deal of last-minute adjustments to make with our, with our, our
Search process.
The process and, and the coordinator of the search process. We, those, those meetings, however, are warned and agenda is published, and our minutes, I don't believe are easily found.
I've never found them, so.
So, you know, that, I think is a, I think that's a good-to-do item in when we rearrange our, our minutes in our Board pages, because we're gonna have to react to the committees and perhaps structure them slightly differently.
Yeah.
So I think that's a good suggestion, but we always have to warn those meetings.
I made that suggestion about two years ago because I thought that we might be in a gray area and just wanted to see further accountability to the public and to the rest of the Board.
I think we're, I think we're very much aware that an audit is possible, and we've seen it in other school boards, and we're trying to be as responsible in following the rules as we can be. I mean, there's, there's never any malicious intent, but
I understand.
I think oversight is, is not excusable.
Right.
So.
I also think the development of the Board site will help us because everyone can go there now. We have a repository instead of just using email to manage a lot of those documents. So hopefully, Board members go to that site frequently and, you know, we're always open to any ways we need to manage that differently or arrange it differently to make it user-friendly for all of you so you can find what you're looking for easily.
Well, why, can I just ask one more follow-up question? One of the, there's the, the letter of the law and the spirit of the law, and a lot of the agenda postings, like you were saying, a 24-hour, a lot of those postings don't even make it to a town office. So in your opinion, is a posting of an agenda on a secretary's cubicle enough for, are we meaning the spirit and letter of the law?
So there's three requirements now for posting. The, the new one is that the agenda must be posted at the time of warning on the, on the school website, but we've always had to post them at two public, designated public locations in each town. So I can at least speak for Westford. They receive the agendas from Ben at the town office and the library, and those get posted on the corkboard immediately. I mean, it's low, it's low-tech, but those are our two public places in, in town. That's what we have. I think when you're talking about a much larger town here, where people may not be passing in and out of the same two places.
Right.
Right, that's where the website suddenly makes sense. In Westford, we've also asked that all of the agendas are posted simultaneously to front porch forum, which is another way to, to alert the town that something's happening.
Great idea.
But the word, you know, publicly posted is very difficult now because I, I think there's really nowhere you can put it that guarantees everybody will see it.
Right.
So that makes the problem a little harder to address.
Thank you.
Mark, I have a question. So the emergency 24-hour that you talked about, is that reserved specifically for the Executive Committee, or could it afford to do that as well, and have we always been able to do that?
There's, there's, I think, three levels of warning. The regular shortened warning period of 48 hours, and the emergency meeting, it can be, I think, 24 hours.
But it's specific to safety, if there is an emerging safety issue and for hiring real estate, similar to the executive session regulations, it has to really fall within those parameters.
The, the fact that we have to take meeting, meeting minutes now at task team meetings is gonna affect all of us, all Board members, okay? The task teams to which you've been assigned or that you volunteered to serve will have to almost self-govern themselves and identify who is taking the meeting minutes, who is, who's gonna get those to the right source for, for posting and so forth. And I know that we will be looking at how that process is going because not all of us are members of all task teams, right? So what's happening on negotiations versus what's happening at Leaders at Work versus what's happening at Policy versus what's happening on communications, and those are, are standard ones, and various other ones come and go as, as a cause arises, it's gonna be incumbent on us as Board members to, to be organized in such a way that, that clerk is identified, so to speak, for that particular committee and that those minutes are taken.
Right. Andrew?
Jack, you've turned a question on my part. How does that with negotiations react with the taking of minutes and the publicizing of that, considering the subject matter?
Our Superintendents, could you answer that one?
I can answer. I think that it's important to know that the standard for minutes typically is just what with a motion, identifying the motion, who voted on the motion, the outcome of the motion. It doesn't require that you retort.
There's not a requirement for a verbatim minutes.
Right. And I think it's important to say, you know, attendance date, that information, that a meeting occurred, and then any decisions that come from that meeting through, through motions and rubber rules.
Right. In any important time issue, so for example, moving into executive session or, and in coming out of executive session, adjourning, those, those are the other pieces that would need to be recorded in a
Visitors, any visitors to be heard. The typical template you see.
So in essence, any meeting that occurs in a public forum has to have actions recorded, whereas any meetings that occur in executive sessions will have minutes reflect the entry and exit from
And whatever, yes.
And what was the purpose?
And then when you come out of executive session, any motion, decisions to be made.
So it's, it's worthwhile to just reiterate, in a committee, no votes are taken, no action is taken.
Taken because of
Right. The committee structure that we've, that we've traditionally utilized is, it's a small group, non-quorum of each Board that goes to work on specific topics, brings that back to their local Boards where action is then taken, or to the SU Board where action is taken, where a quorum of all Boards are present. So it's never, it's not, the minutes from those meetings reflect the work of the committees, right? That's how we have traditionally structured it, so this is just a slight, slightly different take on it.
And I can make available some of the handouts that were given to us at the, I found it right here, that were given to us at the, at the conference.
And we can post those also online under Board Trainings.
Right.
So all that material from our workshops, we posted there for reference.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, Brian?
I guess if one or two Board members are attending a, a meeting of a, of a school department or a school event, is that, is that become a de facto committee meeting, or is that?
No. It would be an appointed group, right? So if, if the Board were to formally charge a committee, that committee then is beholden to these rules. It doesn't cover, you know, a, a, a social meeting like that. But if, if the Board were to, I don't know, form a goodwill committee, that, that the intent would be for Board members to visit each of these groups, then yes, it would be a
But still, if there's a quorum of the Board to attend a meeting?
Is it in the business of the Board? If the answer is no, then you, it is not a meeting, therefore, minutes do not need to be taken. If it is in the business of the Board to attend that function, that's the, that's the measurement right there. Is it in the business of the Board?
Would that fall in our retirement, that's what I'm wondering?
No.
I don't, I don't believe so. Anything else? Okay. Well, Erin has a, has a presentation for us.
And Erin has created a wonderful PowerPoint for us called the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, E.T.S.S. But before I begin, I'd like to recognize the educational leadership team that's here tonight. There's some new members and, and new faces on the Board, and I just wanna introduce folks. So Rob Reardon, Principal of Essex High School, Bob Travers, Principal Director of CTE, Marcy Lewis, Principal of Westford School, Mary Hughes, Principal of Summit Street School, and Suzanne Grunling, who will be the Principal of Summit Street School upon Mary's retirement, which I can start saying now, I have an emotional response. Dan Ryan, Principal Fleming, Amy Cole, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Erin McGuire, Executive Director of Student Support Services. We have spent the past year as an educational leadership team immersed in this thing called Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. Tonight, we'll do a presentation, and it will include Erin, who put together the presentation for us and has really led a lot of the training for the group, Amy Cole with Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and Marcy Lewis. And I think it's very symbolic that the Board see that this is not just a presentation about students who need support, but a presentation about support for all students. And so it's a collaborative presentation that we're gonna review tonight. I'm starting out with the overview on what is this thing called MTS-S, which is what all 16 Board members have been asking me as they've seen it appear in our annual work plan. It's an integrated school improvement model that is standards-driven, proactive, and incorporates both prevention and intervention. responsiveness to instruction is a multi-tiered decision-making approach that addresses academic difficulties for all students. So to have a leadership team that has been focused on all students through the lens of instruction has been our work this year. And the general concept is the structure of leadership around it. It touches each and every part of our system and is truly a collaborative effort. It's not new work. It's a framework that embraces all the work that we have been doing, and as we review it, you'll say, oh, that's where that piece fits in. So the idea is to make it as connected a school improvement model as possible. Marcy's gonna explain the evolution.
Sure. So MTS-S is really an expansion of RTI. So you've probably heard us talk at a number of Board meetings around response to instruction or response to intervention. And RTI started, started out as a really laser focus on how kids respond to intervention, and it, it really got rolled out as a special ed model in terms of a process for a out as a special ed model in terms of a process for identifying students with specific learning disabilities. And as such, it never really called on as a general ed issue. It often got categorized as, oh, well, that's special ed. So MTS S really kind of takes the best that we know of RTI and expands it. And so the steering committee from the state did the research on the best practices of RTI. And what MTS S looks at really is providing a Vermont-centric field guide that is a systems approach. And I think the new name is important for a couple of reasons. One, RTI, again, had this sense that it was always connected to special ed. And as Judy mentioned, or superintendent Nover mentioned earlier, it's a bigger framework than just special ed. That's really important. I also think the new name is important when you think about just language being important. Multiple tiered system. We're talking about tier one, which is general instruction in the classroom and making sure that that's really quality and not just thinking about the interventions that we provide. So it's the tier one. It's the tier two, which is the double dosing, or the tier three, which is the very specialized instruction for students on IEPs, for example, or students that aren't responding to instruction. And I also think it's really important to think about the last S around systems. So it's a systematic approach instead of something that doesn't encompass professional learning, for example. So it's beyond just focusing in on the intervention, but it doesn't lose that. So it provides that level of flexibility for different districts, different systems to respond. And that's really important as well. So it provides some guidelines, it provides some assessments, it provides the best research around what we know about quality professional development and how to implement that in the classroom. But it's not so restrictive that it is one size fits all for every school, which really fits, I think, our SU well.
Some of what you're gonna hear tonight, MTS S, it's another acronym to learn. Some of what you're gonna hear is a lot of the good stuff that you've heard over the years, but put together in a systemic way. So it's not changing practice so much as trying to pull our good systems together around this. We know that meeting kids' needs early is the best preventative way to support students. We want to measure their progress early. We wanna measure their progress often. And for that, we need to move further into our work around becoming a data culture. Our district has done some work with Doug Reeves around data team training. We now have, thanks to the generosity of the boards, a new data system and a new assessment, assessment, student assessment manager. And we are launching that work this summer with a full training with all of our administrators. We're very hopeful that having our hands on the data, fingertips away, will be able to help us. The other pieces that push on this are policy and legislation. So what's really nice is this is not just a homegrown thing that we're doing, but we're surrounded by this language statewide. The schools at Chittenden Central, who are currently working on AYP plans, are now moving towards indicators that are reflective of the five components of the MTS S standards. And that's been a state movement. We have legislation, the education quality standards, I'm sure you've all looked at, have required us to be able to, to organize ourselves around MTS S, to have a data system in place and a data manager in place to make that happen for us. So you may see some language that seems familiar, you've heard it. That's because good stuff in education comes back. What we're seeing here is a way to be able to pull it all together, and we're hoping to be able to share that with you tonight. You've heard a lot from me about Common Core. Common Core sets some high expectations for us as teachers and as students. What we like is that this is gonna put us in a position to be able to try to meet those needs of students and be able to measure it systemically throughout time.
So I am going to spend just a little bit of time walking you through the history of RTI so that you have an understanding of it because it really is from RTI that this national movement occurred. MTS S is not just Vermont. You'll see it at the national level in federal dialogue as well. We know that students in Vermont, that eighty-one percent of students who are not in special education are proficient or above, and only twenty-four percent of students receiving special education are proficient. And we also know that students who are in third grade and not reading at grade level have a one in seventeen chance that they will ever read at grade level, given a lack of intervention. And so MTS S is really designed to, as folks have said, build a system of intervention that gets at this early. The history of RTI comes from some assertions in two thousand and two in reference to the President's Commission on Excellence, that all students should be considered general education first, and that special education should embrace a model of prevention as opposed to a model of failure. The history of special education is that you become eligible for service once you hit a standard of performance that's low. So you perform low and then become eligible, which, if you think about all the services that come through that lens, you end up with a little bit of a wait-to-fail model. RTI was authorized in IDEA in two thousand and four. And what RTI said is that you can determine that a student has a specific learning disability by showing that they're not responding to research-based intervention. That was something that was available to schools across the nation, and some picked it up and some didn't. I think there were only two schools in Vermont that ended up moving to a full RTI model. It required a level of consistency of research-based intervention and data that could be consistently collected to show that there was a lack of response, to determine eligibility off of that. So when that all took place, it was for purposes of both academic and social difficulties and to reduce the number of children who became eligible for special education, and then determine the appropriate level of support that they need. That's all well and good, but it's applicable through a special ed lens. It's not very preventative, given the nature of needing to look at all students at all times to watch for those deficits and intervene on them immediately. Also, RTI was left pretty ambiguous. The Fed said, this, this is not a, you know, one size fits all. Everybody's going to need to do it differently, so we're not going to issue any regulations around it, which also caused it to sort of happen in some places and not in others. So in the experience of RTI, while it didn't go through holistically, in the places that it was implemented, there was some new learning that happened that has sort of spawned a lot of the conversation around MTS S. And some of those pieces are about the importance of expertise of the people who are teaching and the people who are making decisions about how to teach and how to intervene, and also around the systems approach. When you do things student by student by student by student, you miss the opportunity to be holistic in your approach and develop school-wide or even SU-wide approaches that allow you to access resources for any student who might have a deficit in, and you can fill in the blank. So if you imagine trying to create a reading instruction for every student individually who is having difficulty in fluency, for example, instead of thinking about what system are we going to use to implement fluency intervention, and how are students going to come into that? Do you see the difference? And so the learning from RTI really started to think, have us think about how do we build those systems, although it wasn't explicit in the field guides and the implementation process of RTI, because RTI was coming in through that special ed lens that already had a system in place. So you can see the shift from the learning in RTI over to an MTS S system, a multi-tiered system of supports that's available across schools, across systems, in a way that intervenes early and often through use of data.
So the components, there's five components of the MTS S model. You've heard us talk a lot about a systemic and comprehensive approach, effective collaboration, high-quality instruction and intervention, comprehensive and balanced assessment system. You've seen the state coming forward with a balanced assessment model that we're being trained in now. And we've been developing our own local assessment model and expertise of well-designed professional learning. And for many years now, you've seen professional learning embedded in your school action plans and where we've been focused. The important thing to know about those elements is that it's comprehensive and systemic approach, that they aren't a chest of drawers where you look at effective collaboration separately from any of these other areas. They're all interrelated, which makes it both good and makes it more complex and difficult because you can't tear it apart. You have to look at it as a whole. So these are the guiding principles for the multi-tiered system of support response to instruction and intervention. So you'll start to see now, when people talk about RTI, now we're talking about RTII, as I'd like to call it, RTI squared. It's developed, it was developed by consensus of the Vermont Statewide Steering Committee and Vermont REEDS back in two thousand and eleven, so when they began this work. They build on and extended earlier work regarding RTI posts that you can see, and it's posted on the Vermont AOE website. It was designed to lay the foundation for all other work that schools do with MTS S. So again, thinking of this as a comprehensive framework. So principle one, and these principles are really important because as a leadership team, we had to look at each one of these principles before we made a decision to adopt this model. So we had to reach consensus on the foundational pieces. And I'll let you read those instead of reading them to you, except for number one, I have to read, because all of the research tells us that if you really believe that all students can learn, regardless of their demographics, if you believe that, we have proof, ninety, ninety, ninety schools, that we, you can make that happen. And we live in an SU where we have eighty-one percent in some areas, and we're ever so close. Our scores are very high when you look at them across the state. And there is a belief, and we're working on continuing that belief, that all students can learn, and what we need to do to improve instruction so that it's effective. The multi-tiered system is highest quality instruction. And for how long, how many years have we been talking about universal access to classroom instruction now? And principle three is that balanced assessment system. And either during your planning days or during the August meetings, we will share our educational leadership team unanimously adopted our first comprehensive assessment plan for CCSU at our last DLT meeting. So you'll see at each grade level what assessments will be administered and how many times and the time of year. So we can begin to share the work that we've done underneath these principles. As Amy mentioned, the performance data to mark, to monitor progress, and, and again, your support of allowing us to purchase a data system this year. And we've created a three-year plan for implementation, for implementation of that data system. Principle five, differentiated instruction, sound familiar? We were focused on differentiated instruction and have been, and a level of intensity, the responsiveness, responsiveness to that need, and that will always be ongoing work. Principle six, to implement with fidelity the research-based approach. And our teachers have been working on that and doing tremendous work with systems of instruction and intervention. Principle seven is dynamic and positive and productive collaboration. Collaboration sounds like an easy thing. Collaboration is one of the most difficult aspirations for a system to adhere to because it means you have to reach a consensus. And sometimes it means a give and take of loose and tight decisions that need to be made. What happens at an SU level? What happens at a building level? Where's the flexibility in that? All voices are heard and validated, give and take, all of the things that you learn beginning in kindergarten. But it's hard. Collaboration is hard work. And we have three examples this year from our educational leadership team, both our data system and our assessment model and our training in MTS S, that I think we can look toward as evidence of our team's ability to be highly collaborative. But it's something we always have to be working with. Effective leadership. We're blessed here to have seasoned and highly experienced building administrators. And you'll be hearing in your meetings, your local meetings in a little while, we're looking at distributed leadership. The high school's been talking about distributed leadership for quite a while. Tonight, you'll make decisions on some grant funding to continue to build some distributed leadership, teacher leadership in our district to do this work. And the multi-tiered system is dependent on continuously developing expertise. You'll see within your action plans, your principles that identified some of the training and expertise that they're continuing to hone in on and develop. And finally, the point about the principles being interrelated and the integrated coherent plan for continuous improvement. And when I first saw that, I thought, oh, my, back in two thousand and four, we wrote our first plan for continuous improvement across an SU. So this is part of the culture of our SU, and I think we're well aligned and have had many opportunities to practice this. So hopefully it's not this brand-new framework, but a framework that allows our, our teachers, our students, our educators, to come together and see how it all is connected and fits together, instead of it feeling like, oh, we're being drawn here right now or here, and not feel the cohesion of the work.
It's still you, Andrew. Why don't you want me to go instead?
MTS S, the research and practice, you can see it's about refining and improving our practice. And that's a continuous effort. With your support this year, we'll be using data and design systems to improve. And again, the professional learning and development of expertise is going to be, there'll be a laser focus on that work.
So you've got one and two, and then the others.
Okay. So I've got one, a systemic, comprehensive approach. Over the years, you've heard us talk about roots to success. And at the high school, you've heard about global best practices and the evaluation that the teachers have done in those areas. Those are decades of research and, and steps we've taken toward demonstrating school improvement and how to change our instructional practice. And changing instructional practice is very difficult work. And our team, and our teachers have worked toward that, and will continue to work toward a truly effective and sustainable way and a systemic approach that's comprehensive in meeting the needs of all students.
If I also could just reference, you all have the, the self-assessment and the field guide in a link in your email. And the self-assessment will really give you the depth of language in each of these areas to understand exactly what that means from a systemic perspective. This conversation is an overarching, you know, overview for you to understand MTS S. But the, if you're looking for the details of what that means, boots on the ground, this is the place to go.
Is this me too?
Yep. The first two.
Your last one?
You asked me.
I know. Because collaboration, collaborative culture is a distinguishing feature of effective schools and a necessary condition for successful multi-tiered systems. This belief system all in to itself, an area we're continuing to stay focused, collaboration at the board level. Just the fact that we have sixteen board members, or fifteen at the moment, here together listening to this presentation shows that your collaboration this year has made a huge difference in the way we function. Our leadership team as well, and the collaborative environments that are being created in our schools and have been for many years now continue to be nurtured and supported. What is it? It's a, a culture where there's a shared mission and vision, that we accept collective responsibility for student learning, that we value the interchange of ideas with colleagues, we hold high expectations for all, and we engage in collaborative activities.
Component three is about high-quality instruction and intervention. And I really appreciate that they're put, they're included together. Too often when we read frameworks like these, they separate these out and not... Too often, when we read frameworks like these, they separate these out, and not a week goes by that Erin and I don't sit and say, how can we pull this together a little bit more? How are you, the work that I do with my curriculum committee is going to sort of fit with the work that she's doing around this? You've seen your schools modeled around this. You've gone to team approaches, special educators and learning specialists within teams, most recently, the PC board and I had a conversation about a changeover in your model of Title I to try to get to that systemic approach, so these things are not separate. When the math committee launched their search for a K-5 set of math materials, one of the reasons they walked away was because they didn't feel last year that they found high-quality materials to work with that also mirrored high-quality intervention materials. What we do know about instruction in successful contexts is that they're provided by knowledgeable teachers, and you have knowledgeable teachers. We don't often have time for them to talk to each other about their knowledge and share their knowledge, and we have most recently experienced, I would say, historical overhaul of curriculum that has not occurred since 97, and your teachers were real troopers through this one. You have very knowledgeable teachers, and we want to continue to provide resources for them to continue to collect that knowledge. We want to make sure that our instruction and intervention systems are informed by research evidence and responsive to student-teacher interactions. This is not something that swoops in, we assess kids and swoop back out again. It really requires a lot of teacher attention to individual students. You may have heard about FNP, our Students' Experience and Assessment, that's a one-on-one assessment, and what you've done is you've helped to invest in substitutes to help support our teachers administer those. Another successful context is differentiated instruction, but not just differentiated on the whim, but differentiated based on instructionally relevant assessments. You're going to hear us talk a lot about assessments tonight. And we want classrooms that provide a balance of both explicit instruction and opportunities for students to self-regulate and have child-directed, student-centered learning. And back to assessment. We have had assessments and an assessment plan in this district. What I think has been historic has been the elevation of this work at ELT. A lot of this work has been done in vertical teams, and what we've done is we've really focused as a leadership team about talking about it in more depth as a team. Assessment is central in an effective MTSS system. We need to know where our students are in order to figure out where they're going to go. A well-balanced, a well-designed balanced assessment system has a variety of tools and processes that are effective to address various assessment purposes. Every assessment we give has to be designed around its specific purpose. You'll hear terms like screening. A good example is that most recently at the high school, NCT as well, we use a screener called Star Reader, and at CTE, it's a star math. It's a quick assessment. Students who perform well on it, we are going to assess them again at the end of the year just to make sure that they're making growth. We want high-performing students to move forward as well. You're going to hear terms like diagnostic and formative and progress monitoring. Diagnostic is when a student is not making progress, and you want to pull them aside after a few weeks and do another assessment, try to learn a little bit more about them. We have interim and benchmark progress monitoring and summative, that's that outcome, that's the end game, the test at the end of the unit. We most recently, last week, field-tested, I'm still exhausted by it, field-tested S-Bac, which U46 will hear about a little bit later, that's changing our conversation around assessment, the way our students are participating in assessments and what we're learning about what they can do.
This is me. So expertise, within this system, we're talking about designing professional learning supports and making sure that teachers remain experts in their field, experts in content, experts in instruction, so the issues that's really been dedicated toward universal access and toward differentiated instruction and making sure that the professional learning kind of mirrors that. It's also really important to note that the collaborative professional learning opportunities is a critical factor in schools moving forward, and it's something that we probably struggle the most with because it's their most valuable resource, which is time. So, you know, this model, again, one of the reasons I like the comprehensive approach is it doesn't just talk about research-based instruction, it doesn't just talk about data-driven decisions, it also really acknowledges the importance of the professional making those decisions and keeping them up to date on the best research-based practices and implementing those. We also know that the embedded models of professional development have the best chance of being sustainable, so it's not a one shot in the arm, but something that's embedded, it goes back to the annual work plans, it goes back to the action plans in terms of how we prioritize what our teacher learning is and how we hold ourselves accountable. In the end, this component means the most to me because it's the internal locus of control we can really focus on. I can make myself better, I can control that, and we also know that research says that the practices that I do in my classroom make the most difference, well beyond demographic information, for kid's success. So this was nice that it's included in this model.
Something else to take away, well, two things. One is that this incorporates social skills and behavioral aspects as well, so it's not just focused on reading and writing and math and the academics, it's also learner traits and the ability to be a citizen in your school. And so all of these conversations, all of these components apply in that aspect as well, which is one piece that brings it together. The other thing I would have you take away is that you hear us talking a lot about things we're doing, that's because, as Judy said earlier, there's a lot of this that isn't new, and many of you have probably heard about several of these things in different ways and different venues, but MTSS really brings everything together, and you can see that as you listen to it and understand exactly what it is.
I was just going to add to that last slide when Marcy was talking about job-invented models. This is where we talk about coaching and why we're learning that the importance of having those roles in our school. Our literacy coach at the high schools made a tremendous difference in that area, and you'll be talking about it again at your local board meetings tonight. So, our work to date, I've already mentioned a lot of it, we've had a year of study, and it's been an incredible team experience. We have full commitment to this framework as a leadership team, and I'm really proud of that. We've done some partial assessment as an ELT, and it was interesting because the assessment is at the school level, but also we're looking at it at the SU level. So there's been that, well, yeah, I could answer this way if I'm thinking of my school, but I might answer differently if I'm thinking across the SU. So it's, again, a place where we've just tried on some of the partial assessment components. We're in the beginning stages of implementation. Each school has built in connections to MTSS into school action plans, so that when you see that tonight and the action plans are presented, you'll have at least some understanding of the direction we're headed, and we're planning learning and assessment through a school-based lens for each building moving forward, so when you start to see that again in your action plan. Again, here's the structure of the self-assessment that Erin described earlier, and I really highly encourage you, when you have a quality moment in time, to visit this, because when you go through and see the components and the assessment pieces, it'll help you really appreciate the integration of the model. And what's ahead? Self-assessment in each school, a three-year plan for implementation of MTSS across SU. So we're here to answer any questions. We also have expertise in the audience tonight. If any of you have any questions about this framework.
Judy, a question. Okay, so I could see easily enough the systematic assessments. What kind of systematic assessments do you plan on using for social skills?
That's a good question. There are a series of screeners that are available, and we haven't necessarily decided which ones. It's on our deck for figuring out, in a similar way that we need to look at math assessment, and when you, for example, see the assessment plan, there are, it is great because we have what's in agreement at this point, but it's not robust yet. It doesn't include all the math assessment, it doesn't include all of the social assessment. There's, for example, something called a BASK to BEST, which stands for, I'd have to look it up, but it's a screener for at-risk behavior, and it's a quick checklist that you can do, and you can do them school-wide as a universal screening tool for at-risk behaviors. We don't have that in place yet, it would be a conversation about resource allocation, it would need to be a conversation about, is this the way we want to do that? That said, we are in the process of developing through the data system a series of data points that we already have, for example, number of discipline logs, number of attendance, you know, absences, number of nurses' visits, if that sort of becomes a frequent way to get out of class sometimes for kids, and looking at kids in a way that says, okay, if you have so many of each, you might perform at a level four. We're so used to that, kids performing at a four, kids performing at a three, kids performing at a two, and then below the standard. So developing sort of a formula that brings that data together as a screening data set, either for a classroom or for an individual student, and so that is part of the conversation about the data system. So while those are two examples of kinds of screeners that we might use, collecting data in a certain way that we already have, or actually implementing new assessment to collect information, but we haven't officially made any formal decision, the data system is a huge piece of this work, because in order to ensure consistency of review of data, you need to have it in a place where it's consistent, and you can look at it and say, yes, this was done for all kids as a universal screening tool. Here are the kids who didn't, you know, maybe show up with proficiency, here are the diagnostics that we use, and you can get student profiles in a way that cut across time and watch students' progress rates. So you can hear how a data system is really essential when you have 3,000 students and you're trying to make assessments around where kids fall.
I think a data system is important even when you have 195 students.
Yeah, right.
Speaking as the Westford principal, because you also get to know your kids so well in a small environment that you often can miss things because you know them so well and can make assumptions. I would also say that even though we haven't made decisions as a team, our new standards-based report card, which is in common with EJ, has habits of learning or characteristics of learning, and those are also a data point that would be helpful in reviewing, you know, things like student, you know, turns work in on time, those kind of things that parents want to know about their child, that absolutely influences how well they do in class, is another data point that we can use. We have a lot of tier-two or tier-three screeners. By that I mean, so instead of a holistic approach of every kid in the classroom being screened, if we have a kid, for example, that is on a plan that we're talking about who has some symptoms that are alarming to us, we do have clinicians in the building that give the depression inventory, for example. So there are some fairly comprehensive and really diagnostic screeners for students to get additional support from an emotional standpoint.
It's also worth saying that Summit Street School is moving forward with PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Strategies, and will become a PBIS school, and when you become a PBIS school, you have a data set that you must collect associated with that model. And PBIS, which you probably have heard before, it's another example, fits into MTSS as well. It is a system of support available to meet the needs of students with behavioral challenges. We use a lot of letters, and so it's important to ask what they are if you ever have questions. We probably should keep a running glossary of all of the...
We do.
Yeah. I think Gal had a question.
Yes. I haven't, you know, I usually make my own judgments about what's going on and progress. And I haven't, over the years, there has been different levels of advancing these kinds of things within the classroom at SSI. I'll give you two examples, things that I'm looking for. One, in order to record data and to have it measurable, the entire staff has to be on the same framework so that every teacher in every classroom recognizes bullying and people are assessed, and that data recorded. We heard evidence at one of our recent meetings, Mike, you were there, where a former teacher, a student, thought that it was very discouraging that the assessment was not in a consistent and ongoing way, that wasn't measured. So people were getting away with things, teachers were ignoring different things, and I think that's a concern. It's not only the collection of data, it's ensuring that everyone is on board with this framework and moving forward. Second point is doability. In order for me to believe that this is doable, I got to see a schedule, I got to see checkpoints. It's a great item for your annual work plan, but if we're going to put a lot of time and effort in this, I want to make sure it's going to do what you say it'll do, because I like the concept, I think you're on the right track. Six years ago, I think you remember, the heated conversations we had about differentiated instruction and formative assessments, and that we needed to move in those directions, and the progress has been slow, but we're slowly getting there. Staff training is a big issue. Why don't we bring St. Mike's or whatever it takes here and do the training with our teachers here, rather than trying to get our staff out to the college? I don't see a whole lot of that happening. If you want to advance this process, let's have a plan in place. Share it with us. Those are just minor things.
We do actually offer contract courses. A teacher is allowed to choose what they take in terms of courses, so we've offered a number of courses that some teachers haven't chosen to take. A good example would be this summer, we have 25 teachers working with Beth Moore for a week, she's from Columbia's Teachers College, and we're hosting it here, free of charge for teachers, and if they want credits, they buy it above and beyond. Bob has probably spoken with you a little bit about the professional development plan that he's put in place, where they've identified three key areas and the teachers must move through those three. One of them that he's adding this year is assessment and assessment design. It's a challenge. Teachers are challenged for time, and some of them are in master's programs, and that's why they do go to take it over there. Putting Erica LeClaire in this building and having her work with teachers during faculty meeting time was rigorous professional development. We have similar models that are going on in the elementary schools with the math and literacy specialists. It's been a busy couple of years for our teachers. I would absolutely agree with you around the assessment piece and the calibration. One good example is that we have a writing rubric that we've tested out at the high school, we're expanding it to K-12, and we're working with teachers this year to calibrate against that. It's not something that's new to teachers, but because we have new standards, it means we're sort of reframing everything and having to recalibrate again. I would say the EJ teachers have been working with Westford teachers in developing trimester benchmarks. That's a lot of work to identify, so if the standard is here at trimester three, are we all agreement that the standard is here at trimester two and trimester one, so we check a box? Time has been a real challenge for our teachers, and that's an area that I'm sure you're going to hear from your principals again.
My main concern, though, is that all of the staff are on board with not only the collection of data, where the trigger points are, but that that data then is utilized, and somewhere down the line, I hope the boards can see the data and the actions taken, and how it drove responsive, proactive decision-making.
I just had a quick question about all this data that we're going to be collecting, and, I mean, is it going to be, is it going to be able to be used also, say, to target groups across the spectrum? So let's say that it's going to allow you to say, here's a group of kids that are really showing accelerated performance, and we want to allocate some resources to them as well, so to maybe try to spread our resources across the different levels of need. You know, maybe we've got a chunk of kids that are kind of stuck in the middle, too. What can we do for them? Or maybe here's some kids that are just taking off, can we put some resources to them to help them just keep going, sort of thing.
This system will allow us to group students by anything. We can group them by address and follow math scores. What's nice is, I guess I don't want to lead you to believe that our schools have not been collecting data, they have been collecting data. Independently, it's been a challenge to be able to look at things vertically across the schools because we store them in different places, so this gives us not only a place to be able to pull it together, but for us to be able to see it and query those kinds of questions in a much more effective way. Dan Ryan and his AYP team met two years ago when we were first identified as AYP, and we had a whole bunch of good questions. I think one of them was, how are our students who are not successful in kneecap math, who are staying after school for these programs, who also are struggling with reading? Well, it was really difficult to pull that data together. This will allow us to do that, save us some time and be able to open us up to more queries and involve teachers in those queries.
So, kind of to build on that, I know as a board, Westford has asked a lot of questions that are fairly data-driven to help some of our, to guide some of our decision-making, and what is happening here is one component, but how we could utilize that data to answer some board-level, maybe funding or policy questions, might be another component to it. All right, and it's something that us, we as board members need to understand what we're looking for, how to develop it. We've... We've got kneecap scores, and there's some data that you help pull out of that for-
He maybe makes scatter plots.
For Westford, but it was extremely helpful because we were trying to specifically answer a question about our utilization of certain resources, right? That bundled with the data management system will make it a, almost an automatic question, rather than something that took weeks of intense plotting, charting, and research to find an answer to. And the reality is, if you think of this almost like a dashboard approach, our questions may be the same year over year over year. And once you've built a query to just go to the database and graph it, it's trivial to replicate that. So we can start building our own set of items that the board may be interested to look at, and they don't need to be once-a-year kneecap scores anymore. Working together to maybe find that balance is what I hope to see in the future.
And that conversation mirrors identically, from a function perspective, the conversation for a teacher in a classroom. I mean, if you think about data efficiency, it's a huge piece of MTSS. So it's very difficult to make quick changes and decisions, and decisions around intervention and what to do and what research base to pull from, without a quick way to review data. And so that is why you see these pieces so interwoven.
How do you evaluate your success on each of the nine principles?
There is a self-assessment that you can do by school or that you can do by SU, not necessarily on the principles, but on the components.
It is worth saying on the principles, though, that we did take time as a full ELT. The first thing we did was we figured out where we were on the principles, and we listed what does it look like for us if this was true in our schools. And so we did develop a sort of a self-assessment that we can also touch for both the principles. And then this is self, this is already designed for us. So we can go through the self-assessment of the five components of MTSS. But those principles are really important, and it is where we started as an ELT in reference to our own internal assessment. What does it look like? And can we touch that in each school based on what we said was what this looked like? What would the evidence be if this was true all the time in a school?
It'd be interesting to go back and look at it. I was gonna say, do you have a cycle in mind for going back?
Well, we just did the learning process. I mean, we're here talking to you today at the very beginning stages of this process. So ELT spent a year of learning, probably a total of 10 to 12 hours together, really digging into this, thinking about the principles, trying on some self-assessment, looking at the language in the self-assessment, and what will that mean for a school? What would it mean for ELT as a whole? And one of the reasons, at the end of the presentation of what's next, what's next is implementation planning. So Al, what you said is, well, where's the plan?
Where's the results?
That's, you know, that's the next step.
What's outcomes?
That's the next step. What are the outcomes, and what are the steps to get there? And so that isn't fully fleshed out yet as an entire SU or at each school, but it is in our planning. And one of the things that ELT-
And our action plans.
Yeah, and our action plans. One of the things that ELT looked at was like, wow, doability. This is really big. This is not some small effort. A lot of it's in place, but it's not all interconnected at this point necessarily fully, not as a whole SU. So we said three to five years?
I thought you might say ten.
Ten. Maybe I should say ten. Maybe I should say ten.
Go low, and then come in better.
Brian?
Promise less, deliver more.
There you go. It's so, you know, very exciting. I'm very much of my mental model, so I like it. But if I was to share a concern of that, when we start to talk about a systematic and data-driven approach, if the concern was that a child may be just seen as a sum of their data at some point, so that you become a collection of what you've done in the past, can you just address how we don't lose sort of the idea of that one-off, one relationship?
That's you and Marcy.
I was the school counselor before I was the principal. So I've had quite the steep learning curve in terms of data and math instruction and reading instruction. I totally buy into the whole child approach. What I would say to you is, we often talk about data, and people go, oh. Data is observational pieces as well. So when I sit down with teachers at an ESTMing dean or a team dean, and we're talking about a kid, we're talking about a kid, not just how they did on a reading assessment, not just how they did on a math assessment. What this system and the reason we're focusing on it is because I think we do the kid thing really, really well. But to be prepared for that meeting is a labor of love, because we have to go through an enormous amount of paper files and electronic files to get things that happened that are really helpful for us. Like, oh, last year's teacher did X, Y, and Z as an accommodation, and said that A, B, and C was better, and we did, so we have to pull that together. I'm really thinking about it right now in terms of transition meetings, so where students are moving into a new classroom next year. We're trying to give people the right information right now so that they have summer to plan, so that they're prepared DIYs, differentiated instruction, and then give them also information at the beginning of the school year when it's really important to them, because they're also closing the year out now, and their head's not wide into that. So this kind of system allows us to do that in an efficient way. But the conversation about kids isn't going to change. When we talk about kids, we're talking about people. This is why we come to work, I'm not a number cruncher. And the only reason I wanna give an assessment or waste any time outside of the classroom assessing a kid one-on-one is because that information should be so important to that child, because if I get the right information, I'm much better prepared tomorrow and the next day. There's a pretty yucky feeling as a teacher to go in and not quite know what to do with the kid, because they're not learning, and I've pulled out my bag of tricks, and they're still not progressing. That doesn't feel good to go home at night when that happens. So this is about kids. We talk about the data system because we're very impressed with charts, and I'm very excited not to have to get out the calculator or the spreadsheet or the ruler, because it makes things a little easier. But the bottom line is, the only reason we come to work, and the only reason that we collect information on kids is so we can be prepared for tomorrow.
I think the key is that very first principle. And the research that drives that first principle is the blind test that's done. That all starts off with that premise of what that teacher believes, and then what the results are with the kids. So as long as the data never drives the perception of what the potential is of the student, but always drives the, you know, the interest to serve the child, you know, it's always that. And I trust our professionals to always be there, but I think it's something to build into the system, sort of that, the check and balance of it.
Well, a piece of data, one of the number-one correlators with improvement in student achievement is sense of belonging.
Yeah.
Like enough said. I mean, you know, I don't, as Marcy said, I don't think they're completely disaggregated. They're interconnected, and kids who don't have high-quality relationships and feel trusted and work within a classroom with a teacher where they feel important and feel a sense of belonging to that community have a very hard time learning. And when they're presented with frustration level work, that can get in the way.
Yeah.
And so it isn't separate. It could never be in the work we do, for sure.
And I would just follow up, Brian, but I think what will happen once we have a data system and the information accessible to us, is that I think the student's strengths are gonna be more visible. Because sometimes when you come together and as a team and you're looking at why a child's not making progress, it's, it'll change your focus, because you'll be able to see all the ways the student is, does have many strengths, and that's what we're gonna build upon, those strengths. And I just think that it'll be more visible and transparent as far as the whole child with the child can do.
And if I could piggyback on something that Erin said earlier about highly-successful students, oftentimes we get in this deficit approach where we look for what's in common with students who aren't succeeding. When you have a system that with a few clicks can answer a variety of questions, another question that could be asked is, what do all the students that are succeeding in this area have in common? Did they all go through a similar intervention? Did they, you know, all participate in an after-school? So you can also pull from, I remember reading this school improvement book about 10 years ago that talked about how engineers don't always study airplanes that don't fly to figure out how to build an airplane that flies. They study airplanes and that work. And so we often study things that don't work to try to figure out what will work as opposed to studying what works. So, again, the system is only as good as the people.
Using it.
Using it. And so we can choose to ask quality questions, and that is by far a step forward, but a work in progress.
Kim?
Yeah, so just kind of higher level, I heard someone say 2011, something coming from the state, and so we're at the beginning stages, but just put it in perspective with other SUs, other organizations around the state. Are we breaking ground? Are we doing it ahead? Are we doing it with other people? Just kind of what's the possibilities for that, you know, connection with other SUs, whatever?
I would say that our closest partner system, as far as where we find ourselves in Chittenden County, is probably Chittenden South, who has been doing quite a bit of work around MTSS as well. Other systems are also working around MTSS. Essex Town is working with MTSS right now, and everybody has been coming at it a little bit differently. It's definitely a statewide focus point, and I don't feel like we're necessarily way ahead as far as breaking ground. I speak now, I have some state roles that I connect with a lot of other special ed directors. And so I don't feel like we're way out ahead. I would say we're ahead from a lot of other places, and there are about to be a lot of trainings around leadership of MTSS. For example, there's a training being offered by Stephen Kuick, who is sort of a well-known MTSS guy in, I think, Utah, who's going to be coming and speaking about how to be a leadership team associated with implementation of MTSS. So you can, you're gonna start to see it roll out in a PD frame where some of the experience that we've already had, people will go there to experience, and we've done it internally ourselves, whereas some other systems, I think, are waiting to look for training. So I know that doesn't necessarily specifically answer it with data about which, where are we across the state, but that's my sense.
Erin's speaking too right now, a little bit from her role as president of Vermont Council for S U's VSCA.
Special Ed Directors.
I was gonna say, we're at a little bit of a disadvantage, because when the state came looking for a trainer last year for Killington's Leadership Institute, they called upon Erin. So she was the state lead, the state facilitator last year.
And I would thank Tom Bojanowski and Laurie Singer. I heard Tom was with me in that training, and Laurie's part of the board and helped bring me there, so.
And I'm co-president of the superintendents in the region, and we're creating a regional work plan. Actually, it's my eight o'clock meeting in the morning. And Amy sits on the regional curriculum directors. And this year, the special ed administrators, the superintendents, and the curriculum directors met collaboratively, because collaboration isn't only inside, it's regional work and statewide work as well. And we reviewed our progress to date, and each of these organizations are creating a work plan. And all three of us, all three organizations, will have MTSS front and center. So we're looking to maximize resources by having a greater capacity of the leadership within the state working with us as well.
Great.
So Tom, you were short on time.
No, you guys did great. Thank you all for our presentation. Anybody has any question, any other questions you think of? Use your CCSU email, you can get to their addresses very quickly.
So just the logistics?
Yes, so PC will be meeting over in the far corner there.
Westford, the far corner here.
Okay, and then U-46 is staying right here. Okay, well, then we are recessed.
Recessioned.